Council of January 7, 2020 to order, I believe it is 7 or 1? No, like 6:57, 6:59. We're early. How's that? First order of business is the pledge allegiance and Rob McCarroll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody stay standing for a moment of silence, please. Over the past couple of weeks, we've lost three members of the Winthrop family who were continual parts of Winthrop for many years. And they were Marjorie Hill Devine, who worked with the Public Library as the director. And she was there for 13 years as a director and very hard work. Danny Malane, and the young people may not know Danny Malane, but Danny was on the Personnel Board for many, many years, a former town meeting member and attorney. And he had that Personnel Board working terrifically up until the time that we actually did get a HR person in here. So we owe him a lot. Finally, to Peter Felk, out with the Santa Claus, who for years attended the tree lighting, posed with the children of Winthrop and brought joy to so many children, being Santa Claus. So please give a moment of silence for those three people. Thank you. Rule call.
Montse Prino.
President.
Counselor Conde. Counselor Flackad.
Present.
Counselor DeMarco.
Present.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Present.
Counselor Honan.
Present.
Counselor Christopher.
Yes.
Vice President Luteri. President Boncory.
Yes.
First order of business of the Winthrop Town Council at its very first meeting is to elect a vice president. Hopefully it does it. A nomination for the office of Vice President.
I would nominate Counselor Jim Luteri.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, I understand that Counselor Luteri, although he's not here, sent in a letter saying he would accept the job if nominated. And do you have that letter, James?
It's in your package. It's good to get it.
Do you have it? Let's just have it read. Have you read?
Oh, I'll read it.
Counselor, President Boncory. Unfortunately, due to a previously scheduled matter, I had no choice but to be absent from this Town Council meeting, but want to extend my gratitude and acceptance of being nominated as Vice President for the Town of Winthrop Town Council for the next year. I especially would like to thank Counselor Christopher for his nomination and hope that my fellow councilors understand that I take this position extremely seriously and will greatly appreciate your vote to this seat. Any advice or input you would like to discuss will always be welcome. I look forward to a year of inclusivity and cohesion as we strive together to continue to make Winthrop a better place to live, work, and raise a family. Sincerely, Counselor James Luteri. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Have a motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and second to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I direct our clerk to cast one, a unanimous ballot for Counselor James Luteri to be Vice President. At this point, I would also like to appoint my choices for standing committees for these are for the council committees. And I put a lot of thought into this and I would, I think everybody that I have named as a chairman to a committee and have put on a committee fits into that place. And I think they will all do a good job. I think we've got qualified people for each of these committees. The first committee is Finance Committee. And I am appointing Jim Counselor Luteri as chairman, Counselor Farino, and Counselor Honan to that committee. I will pass out the list to everyone as soon as I finish reading them. The next meeting committee, which is also a very important committee, is Rules and Ordinance. And I appoint Counselor Christopher as chair of that, and Counselor Flackad and Counselor Ruggiero on that committee. Public Safety Committee. I appoint Counselor Flackad as chair of that committee. Keep an eye on the police and fire. And I appoint Counselor Christopher and DeMarco to that committee. Next committee is the Public Works Committee. I appoint Counselor Nick LaCanti as the chair of that committee. And I appoint Rob Counselor DeMarco and Counselor Farino to that committee. The next committee is Economic Development. And I appoint Counselor Honan as chair of that committee with Counselor Christopher and Counselor Ruggiero on that committee with her. Next appointment is Capital Assets Committee. And that committee is going to be chaired by Counselor Farino with Counselor Luteri and Counselor LaCanti. And the final committee is the Appointments Committee, which is the Appointments Committees and Commissions Committee. And that chairman will be Counselor DeMarco with Counselor Ruggiero and Counselor Flackad on that committee. I know I gave you some of you extra committees to be on, but I know you all can do that work. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Counselor at that time?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Farino, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor DeMarco with second. Any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? Any additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We now have a public hearing on National Bridge Pole Attachment to be relocated on Main Street. Someone here from National Bridge?
It's not National Bridge. It's a National Bridge Pole. That's the infrastructure provider that's looking to attach to that pole. And I just spoke to the property owner here previously. And I want to meet with him and we'd like to continue the meeting until January 21st or the next available period.
Okay. That's fine.
And we'd not be able to contact him right now.
It was Mike Conde.
I've got his name. We've exchanged information. So we'd like to try to pursue this off until January 21st or the next available period.
Okay. Can we do that? Can we extend this and re-notify everyone? The meeting will be on the 21st.
21st?
Yeah, I'm going to meet with Mr. Conde.
I notice he was here, right?
He was. I talked to him, yes. But we were going to meet at the property and try to work out something. And then we'll try for the next available period, whatever that is.
The pole is actually on public property, right?
It's, the pole we want to transfer to is on, is on public property.
So if I can be part of that conversation as well, if you could have a drive.
Sure. You're welcome. Blue guy at the back of there. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're going to continue as public hearing?
Continue as public hearing. To January 21st, a motion to continue?
Motion.
By Counsel, by Counsel Christopher, second, and by Counselor LaCad. Any discussion on that motion to continue? Here we down. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Vote and so forth. Okay. I am going to call on Counselor Christopher for general information and recommendation because I think at the beginning of every new administration, people should be made aware of the rules of conduct for both the councilors and for the public. So I've asked Counselor Christopher, who is the new chairman of Rules and Orders, to give us some of those rules.
Sure. So the rules and procedures for the Town Council can be found on the Town website and they govern how we conduct business here on the Town Council. There's sections on scheduling, what constitutes a quorum, the rules of order that we use in the meetings, and the committees that we use and their role in the decision-making process, as well as appropriations and also decorum. In regards to decorum at the meetings, they say that our discourse should be courteous and respectful based on the, based on the issues that are on the agenda. We should conduct ourselves in an orderly manner, addressing each other as councilors, as Counselor, Counsel, Vice President or President. And after a motion has been made, any counselor can just signify by raising their hand that they'd like to speak and be recognized. And when they are recognized, they can then go into any debate. Debate should stay on the topic of the motion. And you are only allowed to interrupt another counselor who's speaking to raise a point of order, to express a point of personal privilege, or to question parliamentary procedure that's being used. Citizens can address the council during the two public comment parts of the meeting that are at the beginning and at the end of each meeting. There is a three-minute limit to public comment. However, any counselor may request that additional time for a member of the community be allocated to their time if they wish. If a person from outside the town wishes to address the council, they can do so if they receive a majority of vote of the members of the council. Only at the discretion of the council president can a non-member of the council participate in debate. Comments from the public cannot be slanderous, irrelevant, or repetitive. Members of the public should also not engage in behavior that is disruptive or disturbs the orderly conduct of the meeting. Again, these, the rules are all on the Town website and can be viewed in their entirety there. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, I will now open public comment. Please identify yourself.
Sure. My name's Michael Bacon from Peters, Precinct. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments with the new council going forward. There's been a lot of stuff that's happened here in Winthrop. And basically in regards to the center, different people, lots of different opinions, fairly passionate about it. And as our elected officials, as a constituent, as a citizen of Winthrop, I'm just asking you folks to look at what's ever presented to you. I, as a citizen, would like to know you've done the appropriate research before coming to a conclusion on any issue. And that whatever you decide, I, as a citizen, will respect your decision as long as I know you all have made the best decision for Winthrop and not anybody's particular view. And of course, I have a particular view on many issues. But I really do want to feel good going forward that Winthrop overall is, is what decides the decisions. Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Yes?
I would just like to say congratulations to everybody who's new here.
Thank you. We identified ourselves over the television so everybody knows who we are.
Nan House, Precinct 3. And as my friend John said, everybody starts new somewhere. So I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, do you have any hand up?
Yeah. Karen Chavez, Precinct 2. My issues are the same as they always are. The ferry being number one. Don't look at me like that.
I'm, don't look. Come on.
As of October 29th, when Free Cadet certified, the ferry had a reserve fund of $100,000. The ferry was auctioned for at least six weeks and not more due to mechanical issues and personnel issues. Before we started receiving the ferry, that includes signing contracts for birthing in Boston and wherever else was the balance of the reserve fund. But as everyone is aware, this is not truly a reserve because the town put over $500,000 into that insurance fund over a period of three years because they were the red. Also, where do we stand with the Quincy contract? Is the MP TA going to continue? Or is the Quincy MP TA station now complete for use? Each year, the Finance Commission has requested a look at the half-year lag of fiscal year in the ferry enterprise fund. And I am requesting it again this year and I'm hoping that we will receive it. We have not received it in the last. As far as the new public safety building is concerned, our new fire station, which effort's going to be, where do we stand with the study that has been done or is being done? And lastly, the $1.5 million that was reimbursed to the town from the MSBA following the final audit in the fall of 2018, where is that money and have any plans been made for use? I understand these questions cannot be answered, but I think they need to be answered by someone soon.
Does anyone have an answer?
We'll follow up with that in the next meeting. We'll have a number prepared for you.
All right. Thank you.
On the ferry, we can get that free on the ferry.
All right.
Well, this just needs the ferry. I think the whole town needs to know what's going on with the ferry.
Okay, so we can have that reported in the next meeting? Just as to where those three funds are?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Nick Bracy, Precinct 1. Nice to see everybody. Congratulations to the newcomers as president. I wanted to just make aware, make you all aware of the concerns that my wife and I have and I've heard throughout the community about our school system. And it's something that I would love to see, as well as many other parents in the community, something being done about that. I have three children that are going through the schools right now. They're young. My wife went through the school system from K through high school, ended up going through Northeastern University, graduating there and becoming a very, a great teacher. With that said, the school system that we have is not what we, what we should have. It's not as robust as it can be. And we underpay our teachers. We have old books, old curriculum that underserve our students throughout the whole community. And there is such a high teacher turnover rate that nothing is ever going to get better with something like that. We don't have good professional development for our teachers. These are, we're getting teachers that are young, they're coming out of school. This is an easy job for them to get, but they come in, it's called a stepping stone. And you, I'm sure all of you know that. And what's going to happen is they come in and then they get their year and then they go to another community where they get the professional development. They stay there and they get the benefits that they, that they want as a teacher. And this is something that I would love to see and hold this council accountable for, as well as, you know, the rest of the, the school committee as well. So thank you for listening to me and this will not be the last time I talk about this.
Nick, what grade are your kids in?
Kindergarten first.
Kindergarten first. Mine are first and fourth. And if I may, Mr. President, those are concerns that I share as well.
Great.
And you know what? I think it's very important that you did not mention anything negative about the teachers in the Winthrop school system because my, my experience has been that we have great teachers. And I'm in the same boat as you. I want to retain our great teachers. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Happy New Year. Julia Wallers, Precinct 2. I also want to echo again and congratulate you all on the new term, both especially those who ran for election that takes guts and also those who have been here for a long time. You've all stood up to serve the term and that's truly commendable. So thank you. It's a new year, it's 2020, but it's also a new decade and a new council. What will be the new Winthrop in 2020, 2025, 2030? And when I say the new Winthrop, I don't mean are we going to wipe this slate clean and become something new and completely reinvent ourselves? But there are a lot of really fabulous things about this town that are worth preserving as time goes on. But there's a lot of things that I hope we did not bring forward with us into this new decade. And I will be looking to you all as our elected officials to address those things as we move forward. And a few of those things that I would just like to list tonight that I look forward to working with you all on include our empty buildings, both public and privately owned, crumbling and substandard infrastructure, especially our sewers and streets, schools that are not level funded. I share the same concerns that Nick expressed tonight with my own daughter. And also properties that are extremely vulnerable to extreme weather and sea level rise, not to mention airport pollution and noise. So I hope that you are the council that plans for the future, not the future we're afraid of, but for the future that we want. And I know that our town manager has proposed some visioning processes to lead us in that direction, to coming up with a cohesive vision that we can all get behind. Win 2030, whatever it's, that we end up calling it, something that we, that can lead us forward towards a more robust, vibrant, sustainable, financially solvent future. And I look forward to being part of those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. And I think that you're going to see a very cohesive council that's going to be unified in moving things forward.
Forward.
And moving forward.
I like that word.
As quickly as possible.
Yes.
And I hope that the townspeople that have been somewhat stopping and stalling some of the projects that have been going on are going to be inspired by our unity and get involved in getting things done.
Cheers to that.
Okay. Cheers to that. Any other public comment? Bob?
Bob Carroll, Precinct 6. Happy New Year to all. I just wanted to just say that, you know, this is the time of year that I usually look back at the past and sort of take stock of what's happened and also just sort of set goals. And so this is kind of a good segue with what you just said, President Boncory. I would encourage you all to sort of start setting and sharing those goals with yourselves and then with the public so we can kind of figure out ways to kind of move forward. So in the coming year, I'd like to see some of these quality of life efforts that I think the Winthrop residents have been pretty clear about, showing a desire to move forward. These, to me, I know there's challenges financially and there's ways that we can overcome them, but they're pretty low-hanging fruit. They're not really, they've been discussed at length already. And for whatever a host of reasons, they haven't quite happened yet. I'm talking about like just putting up some bus signs around the, around the town.
Been talking to Julia.
Don't get me started, Bob.
Sorry, yeah. Osmosis here. And then, you know, fixing, fixing playgrounds, just simple things. Swing's broken. I've seen parents doing it. This isn't something that, you know, we should be doing. Establishing a dog park. If the, if the site is a no-go and it's going to cost us a million bucks or whatever just to clean the dirt, let's find another place to let our dogs run around. It shouldn't be that hard. And then creating bike lanes. There can't be a street in town that's not capable of having some paint put on it. Some of these things have kind of gone by the wayside. It's just a bunch of can't do. I think we can do some of these things and we can do them fiscally responsibly. So I hope that we can build some momentum on some of these, you know, low-hanging, again, won't be easy, but gain some momentum. So when you do need an incredible amount of public participation and public trust, you can start tackling issues like those big infrastructure projects and improvements. Start doing parking studies and looking at parking policy throughout the town, zoning updates that are desperately needed and whether the middle school's in them or not, I don't care, but let's figure it out. And bracing for impacts like climate change. We are the most vulnerable community, certainly in Suffolk County. And the conversation was started last year. I'm happy to hear that. I think there needs to be a lot more focus on it. And just want to end with, I wish you all the best. It's not an easy place and I hope you can establish this long-term vision, but just get some short-term momentum behind the townspeople. I know there's a lot of talented people in Winthrop that are willing to help in some ways.
I think you read a lot of people's minds here. Anything else in public comment? Sir?
Yes, my name is Edwin Snow. And I ride my bike all year round. I rode it here tonight. I can attest to the roads. They're pretty bad even on a bike. Ocean, I'm on Ocean Drive, which is nice. The state did that, I understand. A lot of the side roads, on the gym, on Bank Street, there's potholes, even on bike. So I can imagine what it's like in a car. But hey, welcome.
Thank you. And as you're driving around and noting those potholes, you know, let our public works department know about it. I mean, there's a way to do that. You get online, let them know. And they'll be put into a priority as they're fixing them.
We actually have an app called Seek Click Fix that you can use and report it right there. And you can, it can pull right up on your location. So if you unfortunately hit one and you're on the side of the road, feel free, let us know.
No, that's important that every citizen sees something, say something. That sounds very trite, but if you see something, say something. Steve can't see every road every day to know what's going on. But if he knows about it, he'll put it into his calendar and he'll get to it. And he might not get to it that very day, but he'll get to it in order of what's going on. But please let us know. And that way things can be fixed. Any other public comment? John?
Johnny, Precinct 1. Everybody has suggestions. And I have maybe one I want to throw out there, but I want to say something first about this town. It really is a great town to live in. It's unique, the Boston metropolitan area, especially compared to our neighbors. We're a residential community, we're a low-rise residential community. We're also fit almost every one of the marks that planners have been looking for since the 80s and that smart growth. We're a dense town. Everybody that lives here is within walking distance of a park or a beach. We have recreation available at our playgrounds as well as in other areas of town. We have a vibrant business community. People don't seem to understand this, but we've got over 270 members of the Chamber of Commerce. We give out over 300 business permits in this town. We've got an awful lot to be proud of, but as we've heard tonight, we've got a lot of things to work on. Looking to the past, part of the problem of moving forward is the controversy that is generated. And some of it angry, some of it poorly articulated, but we've seen it in the center. We've seen it with buildings that have gone up around town. Clearly, there's a development problem along with a long list of problems that we've heard from, from both Mr. Carroll, Ms. Wallers, you sir. We've got to come together. And I heard this last night from you, President Boncory, and other members. And there are some things that, to get to a consensus, well, a consensus you'll never get, but 60% of the population that's supporting you are on your way to being able to get something done. People that are critics, people that come in that are angry, like the people on Vine Street, the building went up over there, they were surprised. They complained and didn't think anybody heard you. Many people in this town don't know who their counselor is or what their phone number is. And I'd like to challenge you all to not make mistakes of the past. Every counselor, this town is smaller than South Boston. We're smaller than the average ward in the city of Boston. The average ward's 28,000. We're at 18,000. I suspect we're going to be close to 19,000 on the census is done. It's not that big. And each of you know people you got elected. You have people that you talk to that know you. You've got to keep them informed. You should have groups that know who's interested in what issue, where you live. You've got to become an ambassador that comes out there and builds support in an honest and truthful way and not surprise people. I think everybody remembers what happened with Agman Road when people got surprised. And that should never happen. And I hope it doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you, John.
I want to thank you all. And I look around and I'm surprised and heartened by the young people that are now here. There's only one person that I remember here four years ago, and it's the president. And I want to thank you because I know the sacrifices. New members don't know, people like my counselor do know. You've taken on a lot. And you're going to have to be patient and you're going to have to be a salesperson. And if this town comes together, and I hope it does, it rests on your shoulders to empower that and to motivate people to become involved. The people that care come here. Most of the people I see here on a regular basis when I come or watch it on TV is the people.
John, your first person, I got to tell you, three minutes is long going.
My good friend. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, for your compliment. Anyone else wish to speak? Lisa?
Lisa Albregini, Precinct 4. And I want to echo so much of what's already been said, starting off with congratulations all. And it is a new year, it is 2020, new decade. We have a lot to look forward to. And I think we all know this is a really special, special town. And I think that the comments particularly that John just made about coming together and... and that others made earlier about moving things forward are so true. I think that if your election, or reelection comes, a great opportunity and an even greater responsibility. And I really look forward to working with you and watching how you execute on, you know, that responsibility and all that we have, all that Winthrop has to offer and all that we have to accomplish. I want to encourage just a few things quickly in particular. And I know that this is all about taking positive action to make Winthrop an even more vibrant place. But the first thing would be to respect, I would encourage respect, the enormous work that's been done by previous committees, town committees and citizens and citizen groups, including things like the master planning process. It was a very, it was long and it was detailed. You know, I'm not talking about looking to the past. I'm just talking about looking to the work that has been done, the hard work by a lot of people that really was done to move us forward and for various reasons has gotten stymied. You know, we really have been able to kind of get to consensus and act on it. So I would encourage respect for work that's been done previously by the planning board, by the master planning group and others. The second thing, a couple of people have mentioned as well, I would really encourage, as we all know this, to address those sort of empty buildings and the infrastructure. You know, I drive up and down, all around Winthrop and then up and down Revere and what's going on on many of the streets and on the beach, the back road. And there's a lot of development and I, you know, some people would think too much. Some people are afraid of the development. I really think we should, they look at what types of development and what types of designs we can embrace because I don't want Winthrop to be left behind. And it's a time right now, enormous economic opportunity that's not going to be here forever. And if we don't take advantage of that, you know, I'm afraid we're going to really miss out. So I would really encourage us to take, to again, move forward. That's what everyone's already said, be proactive. Let's do something with these empty buildings and the infrastructure issues that we have. And don't be afraid of it. Related to that is my next one, of course, and that is encouraging ways to deal with our dwindling tax base. And they're all connected, right? We have responsible development, we can get more revenue and then we can do a lot with our schools. So all of this, these are just pieces of the same puzzle and we can't, we can't head down the path until you unlock one of them. Transit, we should be addressing, we all know that, in addition to the roads for biking. Climate change, I think Bob mentioned that, totally needs to be addressed, we're hugely vulnerable. Again, in closing, I would just say, you know, go back to the first thing, which is respect, looking at the hard work that's been done. And I think Julia or somebody earlier said, let's talk about the future that we want and that we can't have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is anyone else for public comment? Having none, we'll close public comment and we'll move on. We have no committee reports because the committees will just form tonight. We will have committee reports at the next one. Can I please have a town manager's report?
Sure. Hard to find, follow such an incredibly positive public comment period. So thank you, everyone who is involved in this.
Happy New Year.
Yes, New Year.
I thought you would do this.
If we could have a new council every meeting and we can have this positivity, I mean, we'll see what happens.
They listened to me last night.
Everyone did listen to you.
And unity.
The first item that I have in here is the establishment of a town manager's risk management task force. Our insurer, Maya, put that as a requirement, as a continuation of our policy. We need to get some stuff in order in-house. So this is a step towards further compliance with what our insurer is asking for. This is just a quick rundown of some of the potential responsibilities that they would have and how it would be set up. Nothing crazy, internal thing, but just wanted you all to know. Next is a letter from Mast dot concerning an additional amount of chapter 90 funding that we received of $27,732, which is great, helps our, chapter 90 goes to roads and infrastructure and things like that, which is incredibly helpful because we will take any additional money that we can take in those regards. I am going to be out of town on Monday and Tuesday next week. I'll be out of state, so I wanted to ensure that you all knew that I would be out of state. In my absence, CFO Anna Freeman will be manning the ship. And then I just wanted to note on some of the items brought up in public comment, just so everyone knows that we are trying to attend to some of the very important issues that were brought up. First with Win 2030, MIPC is in the process of writing up a contract with us for it so we can get that launched, I hope in January, but most likely in February. I signed a contract with an engineer today concerning Pleasant and Main Street and the feasibility study on it. That engineer, I'm also looking to put a little money towards him, working with the TAC concerning some bike markings along town, around town. I can't necessarily commit to bike lanes, but I can help facilitate a conversation about what our bike infrastructure looks like and what sharing the road looks like within our town. Karen, we will have that memo for you next week, or in two weeks. That will be completely prepared. In terms of Mr. Carroll, the quality of life issues, bus signs, I myself, Eric actually changed jobs recently, a couple of months ago. Yeah, he still works there, but he works somewhere else.
He did some of that role.
Inside baseball, but this is the bus stop sign stuff. We're working on it. Julia actually just recently reached out, but I reached out right before the holidays as well. Dog park, we are hard at work on as well and then the bike infrastructure fits in previously. In terms of the road conditions, I share the frustration with it. With the chapter 90 funding, we're always looking to alleviate these problems. We have in the past had the mindset of where we're doing the underground work, we do the surface work as well, but we're always looking to see if we can kind of fix smaller problems around town. And then Ms. Albergini, I echo your comments in terms of reflecting on the work that's been done in town. I have, I kind of joke around, I have an immense amount of reports in my office. If anyone would like to see, over covering 30, 40 years worth of planning that has been done on behalf of other entities for the town of Winthrop. Some of those plans were followed through on, many were not, but they're still good ideas and good plans for things. So I'm constantly kind of picking them up and leafing through them to see what ideas remain. I mean, people have been talking about water storage problems and flooding problems since Winthrop has become a town. So this, like, these are things that people have been talking about. We have those in my office, but I encourage everyone to kind of look at some of the work that's already been done, the master planning document from 2017 or 16. It has a wealth of information in it, including a lot of reflection on the middle school site that I know is going to come up later on tonight. The empty buildings, I would also echo the, see what's happening around here. There's not one size fits all for any community. There are interesting things happening in Revere, but also Chelsea, Somerville, all over Boston. I mean, all the way out to Framingham and the likes, you can see new developments and what new buildings look like and they can fit the character of the town. But I think at some point with some of the changes that could possibly happen, I would love for the town to be educated on what they would actually like it to look like if developers come to town. And lastly, climate change, like it's legitimately one of my, I would say it's probably my top priority. Every decision that I make, climate change is at the back end of it. I'm on the MMA Energy and Environment Committee. I serve on the MIPC Climate Resiliency Group in turn, on behalf of metro mayors. I'm not going to stop working on this for my entire career. A place like Winthrop, it's scary how vulnerable Winthrop is. So this is something that should be attended to with every single dime that we're spending in town for the foreseeable future. With that, unless anyone has any questions, that's my report for this week.
Do we have any questions? The council? Okay, thank you. There was no school committee meeting last night because of the swearing in. Excuse me, so I don't have a school committee report, but I think, Jen, is there anything that's happening? Anything happening on the school?
Anything happening on the school committee?
Why don't you just give us?
We are continuing negotiations with the teachers and I know that, and I know that dinner theater is coming up, so I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that with the high school. So everything, right now, we are getting, starting the budget preparations. So we'll be doing, similar to last year, we'll be doing a ground up, working on the budget so we're not just going forward with what we have. Previously, we're looking at what we actually need so that we present a fair document to you.
That's Jen Powell, a member of our school committee. Thank you for filling in for me because I didn't know what's going on. All right. Old business. And there's one issue on old business and that's a discussion of the middle school zoning. And as I said last night, this is my number one priority, is to get something done with that building that's been sitting there for so long. And my plan was to come forward tonight and ask that we put into a SDOG where we can finally have it zoned, which wouldn't have to go through any process because it's only for SDOG is already prepared. But I want other people to take a look at it. So I am going to send this issue, which is the middle school zoning issue, to a joint committee of the Rules and Ordinance Committee and the Economic Development Committee. So I'm going to ask Councilor Honig and Councilor Christopher to get together with a joint meeting and invite the planning board or whoever else you'd like to invite and give a report back at our next meeting on the 21st because I really do not want to link up. I want an answer to what we're going to do with that building and to have someone bidding on it by March at the latest and hopefully by February. Okay? So if you please do that, you can set the meeting right now with any.
Do you want to set it up now?
Yeah, that would be great.
No pressure, guys. But we take this off.
Yeah, we can do it. I think I have to.
We'll probably get better.
Right now. Okay, is there any other old business? Having none, we'll move on to new business. We have two motions about the town manager and they're both financial motions that are going to have to go to the rules, I mean, to the finance committee with Councilor Terry. I will read the motions and the text of the motion by the town manager. Said, I move the town council adopt the following order. Order that the town appropriates the sum of $1,265,000 to pay a portion of the final judgment against the town by its superior court in the matter of Raquel versus Town of Winthrop, Civil Action Number 1484, Civil Venue 03200. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Master General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, subsection 3, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town. Therefore, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Master General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount and that the treasurer is authorized to seek the approval of the municipal finance oversight board to issue the bonds or notes authorized by this order for a period of time not to exceed 10 years pursuant to Master General Laws, again, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 3. I have a motion to send that to finance.
Motion to send that to finance?
Motion by Councilor Farino and seconded by Councilor Christopher to send that to the finance committee who'll vote at our next meeting. The second motion, also by the town manager, is a similar type motion for the same purpose. And motion is, I move that the town council appropriate $325,000 from the FB reserved of overlay surplus account to fund a general fund special article number 0916058-581XX. FY20, legal judgment slash settlement or take any other action there too. Can I have a motion to go with that as well?
Motion to refer to finance?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There is one other motion that's come before us and that is a motion by Town clerk on, and the motion asks that the Winthrop Town Council, in accordance with 950 CMR 47.04 and 950 CMR 51, designates the town, the Winthrop Town Hall as the early voting site for the Town of Winthrop for the time period that runs from February 24, 2020 to February 28, 2020. Can I have a motion to send that to whose coordinates? Motion by Councilor Farkat, seconded by Councilor Christopher to send it to Rules and Ordinance for a vote at our next meeting. This is, of course, for the primary election period, we have to designate an early voting area. And finally, under new business, I have an appointment and it's going to be two appointments because now the town manager has established another committee which needs to have someone appointed to. My first appointment is to appoint a former town council president, Ron Beckia, as chairman of the licensing board of the Town of Winthrop. We have an opening on that board and I would like to see Ron become the chairman. So I'm going to task that you have, will make that motion.
All right, the motion, is there any seconds? All right, any debate? Ron Beckia to be chair of the licensing board. None? I think we can do it with a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Ron has the.
Okay, hold the gap. I have another appointment.
The president, you recognize.
Thank you. All right. As that town manager has stated, he has established a town manager's risk management task force and one member of that task force will be a council, counselor appointed by the council president. And I would like to appoint Counselor Jero to that position. He was the only one that I left off as a chairman of one of the standing committees and I'd like you to serve on that committee for us. Okay. Second?
Sure.
Approved by appointment?
Second. Been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Jero has been appointed.
Thank you. Public comment again. Any public comment?
Ms. Wallace, again, just, I just want to know at which point in the process, maybe this year, since tonight, we just sort of appropriated a whole lot of money to lawsuits. What point can we start having a public conversation about that? Not what happened or why or who, but just where is the money coming from and what are we doing to prevent these from happening again? I just think the public would maybe like to hear some discussion. I know there's been a lot of executive session, private conversations, rightfully so, things have been in court, but are we at the point now where this can be more, something that we're more open about so we can just be sure that as we move forward, they don't keep happening?
Unfortunately, at my very first meeting, that is what you heard. That's where the money is and those are the two amounts that we've talked about. So that is public now, okay, since that came out tonight. The second thing is that the committee that the town manager, this risk management committee, is just for that purpose, all right, to make sure that we're not, and that is a mandatory committee that our insurance company has put on us to make sure that we're educating everybody that works for us not to make those kind of mistakes. Okay? So we're working on that immediately.
Like a public statement or something from the council would be really fantastic.
Well, anyone else on the public comment? Three minutes this time. I gave you five last night.
I didn't take five, did I? I'll take 90, 60 seconds. Just a quick follow-up on that. I think when the last budget was put together, I didn't see the settlement money in the budget. So I don't know if there's this time when you settle up quarterly or whatever, so it would be just good if there's a budget settlement, a kind of, you know, meeting to see that in there. But I mean, because we didn't know what it was. So that's the first comment. The second comment also echoes a little bit what Julia said, it would be good, it would be great, it's great that risk management and our insurance company has required that we have a policy and that we educate employees. It would be nice if that were embraced by the council.
employees. It would be nice if that were embraced by the council and we have kind of, you know, public statements about indiscrimination and other kinds of, you know, positions, that policy positions as a matter of just our values and, you know, morals as a town. So I would encourage that in some of your future action.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Any councils have anything they'd like to say? Other than that, I'll give you a public relations update. There's a Christmas tree pickup on regular trash day. I think it's the week of January 6th and the week of January 13th. Your Christmas trees will be picked up on your trash day. And I think the Chamber of Commerce is having their installation of its new offices on the 15th of this month at 7:30 in the morning, if anyone's interested in attending. I'll be swearing them in. All right. Anyone else on the council? John, let's stand a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilor Fino, seconded by Councilor DeMarco. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Making adjourn.